Good evening, everyone. We're going to be starting very shortly, so if you could grab some refreshments and have a seat, we're going to start our program in about five minutes. Good evening, everyone, and welcome to the Montgomery County Board of Education's 27th Annual Presentation of Awards for Distinguished Service to Public Education. I'm Lynn Harris. I'm currently the Vice President of the Board, and on behalf of all the Board members, I want to thank you so much for joining us for this very special evening because I think all of us who've been in education and advocacy in this county, and I have been for more than 15 years as a parent, as a PTA member, as a county PTA member, as a teacher, we know how important our partners are and the people who go above and beyond in and outside of our school system every day to help serve our students better and provide them with robust opportunities and support and mentorship. And so to me, this night is very, very important because it gives us an opportunity to really showcase some of the shining, I'm looking at the decor, shining stars that are out there in our community that really, really doing extraordinary work for students. And before we proceed, I really, I really want to thank our amazing young musicians who are here today. Kingsview Middle School students. So we have Jemima Lee, an eighth-grade student on violin. And she told me next year she's headed to Poolsville High School. And Joshua Hong, seventh-grade student on the violin. Claire Kim, eighth-grade student on viola, who's headed to Northwest High School next year. Hannah Philippi, a seventh-grade student on the cello. And their sponsor and director, Mrs. Shubleski. Thank you so much for being here. So I also would like to take a minute to recognize my colleagues on the Board of Education. And so I'm just going to go around to see, I know Ms. Rebecca Smandrowski is here. And I'm looking, Ms. Julie Yang. And Ms. Shebra Evans. And Ms. Brenda Wolf. And I believe we're expecting our student member of the Board, Sammy Said, but I do not see him yet. Oh, okay. All right. And then our colleague, Grace Rivera Oven, is unable to join us this evening. And who else am I missing? Oh, and Ms. Carla Silvestri. You may have heard how she's spending her day tomorrow, so she is a bit busy getting ready to face down Congress. So, and I also want to recognize some of our elected officials who are with us this evening. I see my good friend Delegate 39, D-39 Delegate Greg Witten. And I think we have Mr. Chow Wu from D-8, 8A, 9A, sorry. Anybody else slip in that I missed? And then I think that I hit everybody. And so just tonight, we are honoring members of our community for, as I said, for exemplary work on behalf of all students. And you can identify our honorees because they're wearing these bootneers, sitting at tables with their families, but I mean, many of our honorees are, we have some individuals, and we also have people who are part of a team. And that team is also very important to the work that we do and they do to support our students. And for every, I love this part of the ceremony, for every one of our honorees, we have a video that is going to help you both get to know them and their work. So you get a much better sense of why they are so important and why they truly do provide distinguished service to education in Montgomery County, much better than words could do. So we are going to begin our program in just a second. And to do that, our first presenter is my colleague, Shebra Evans.
Good evening, good evening. You all look amazing. This room looks fabulous. Can we give a round of applause to the Board staff because they put all this together? Yes, thank you. And then I wanted to recognize our interim Superintendent, Dr. Felder. She's here today as well. Dr. Felder, please stand to be recognized. All right. So it is my distinct honor, pleasure, privilege to introduce the first category, and it's for community individuals. The community individuals that I'm going to allow to introduce to you in just a little bit have been outstanding in their exceptional significant contributions to public education. So we just thank them so much for all they do on behalf of our students. And with that, I'm going to ask for the first introduction video of Ms. Evelyn Chung.
It's my privilege to introduce Evelyn Chung as this year's recipient of the Board of Education's Community Individual Distinguished Service in Public Education Award. Thank you, members of the Board of Education, for recognizing her tremendous contributions. I've had the privilege of advocating for MCPS students alongside Evelyn for many years. Every advocacy effort Evelyn puts forth is grounded in research, equity, collaboration, and diversity. Through her various leadership and support roles within MCCPTA and beyond, her efforts have broadened participation and expanded partnerships with local PTAs, county stakeholder groups, and community organizations to advocate together toward common goals. From countywide Zoom workshops to brown bag lunches to BOE testimony to countless meetings with MCPS and stakeholders, she has worked tirelessly in all of her endeavors. In collaboration with MCPS advocates from various stakeholder groups and industry experts, Evelyn's work has led to improvements in curriculum inclusivity and transparency, educational resources for families and students, and equitable access to courses. Please join me in honoring Evelyn for her cooperative and unwavering commitment to equity and opportunity to ensure all students reach their full potential.
Congratulations. Could we ask Evelyn Chung to come to the front?
Wow, thank you so much to the Board of Education and Audra for that beautiful speech. I had like tears. I'm so thrilled and honored to receive this award. It is very, very special to me, especially because my fellow MCCPTA volunteers nominated me, so thank you for that. To me, this award is really to the many parents, teachers, and students that the MCCPTA and our PTAs represent, and to the other volunteers who have worked tirelessly alongside me to advocate for an excellent education for all students. I also appreciate this award because it recognizes that community outreach and advocacy are forms of public service. Our committees provide spaces where the community can feel heard and not so alone in this big system, and when we see systemic issues, we advocate for solutions. Engagement takes work, but we accomplish so much more. Last week, members of OSSWB and OSIP, our Office of Curriculum and Instructional Programs, participated in our curriculum committee's instructional equity workshop to talk about high-quality materials and how to ensure that teachers and schools have the year-round training and support they need to deliver engaging, meaningful grade-level instruction. The nearly two-hour discussion was dense, nuanced, and it expected a lot from our PTA leaders to absorb, but everyone stayed through to the end. Our teachers and school administrators face unprecedented challenges today, but they should know that they are not alone. To sum up, I would like to recall the movie Chicken Run, in which the protagonist, a chicken, keeps trying to help chickens escape the coop. She laments that she can easily get one or two chickens out, but the hard part is saving all of the chickens. That, to me, sums up the MCCPTA mission and the challenge of our times. How do we ensure an excellent education for not just some of our children, but for all of our children? And thank you to the Board of Education and to all of our PTA volunteers, teachers, and MCPS leaders that I have worked with in the last six years to try to achieve this mission. Thank you.
That was so great. So now we're going to, we're going to play the next nominator video for Farzad Macareci.
It is my pleasure to introduce Farzad Macareci. We were very fortunate to meet Farzad many years ago when he volunteered through the Automotive Foundation by providing students dealership visits and tours at Darkars 355 Toyota. As time went on, Farzad climbed the corporate ladder but didn't desert us. His passion to help students only increased as he brought the support of the entire Darkars organization. Farzad has since joined the ATF as our Vice President. He and his staff continually volunteer to ensure that students understand the opportunities that await them. Farzad is well-versed in current and emerging industry trends, holding over 21 industry licenses and certifications, and currently is acting as a recruiter, manager, and Maryland State Inspector trainer. He recognizes the industry's competitiveness and works to ensure that MCPS graduates have the skills and training necessary to impress employers. Farzad and his team partner with our high school programs to provide seminars, trainings, and expert panels, creating equity and connections between Darkars and our students. He provides new vehicles and training to our programs and provides opportunities to our teachers to participate in manufacturer's training. He is an influencer who shifts the conversations around the automotive education and allows students equitable access to the myriad of career opportunities and technological advances within the field. Farzad values education and encourages graduates to become an ADEI apprentice where they're employed full-time with a living wage and continue their post-secondary education upon graduation, all at no cost to our students. Farzad, thank you for your continued hard work and cultivation of our partnership. Congratulations on your Distinguished Service to Public Education Award.
Congratulations.
Hello, everyone. Just, I'm going to leave the stuff to the experts. You know, the lady at the door, she did an outstanding job pinning the flower. I was a little nervous about the needle that came with it. And I tried to fix it and, you know, I keep, yeah, I should have just left it the way it was. My teammates pointed out that I can memorize a few hundred pages of repair manual, but I need one page to bring up. So I'm going to start. Good evening, Board of Education members and Dr. Felder. Thank you for this very kind recognition. I accept this award on behalf of the entire Darkars organization. Here tonight with us, I'd like to recognize my mentor and also owner, Mr. Jamie Darvish, our fixed stop, corporate fixed stop director, Mr. Kevin Higgins, our corporate service director, Mr. Iman Mukara, and our multi-franchise shop foreman, Mr. Christian Sotomayor, and Mr. Michael Lautowski. Over the past 45 years, Darkars has spanned across six states and over 30 locations. While it is Darkars philosophy to run ethical and profitable business, there is a large focus and core belief in giving back to community. As part of giving back, the Darvish family has reinforced the importance of supporting the next generation of leaders. I am honored that Darkars has given me the authority to help shape the future of automotive workforce. Together, we coach, mentor students, provide visitations to local schools, and participate in skills competition around the state. We make certain the MCPS curriculum remains relevant and with current and future technology, and the automotive programs are equipped within the latest, greatest tools and equipment. I am fortunate that I get to see the automotive programs, not just in the region, but around the country. Within MCPS, the Automotive Trade Foundation has been a wonderful way to engage our business partners and encourage networking opportunities for MCPS students. With dedication, support, and leadership from our local automotive community, I can share with you tonight that the automotive, that the Montgomery County provides one of the best automotive programs and curriculum that we have seen around the nation. Thank you, guys. MCPS automotive programs are second to none. They are preparing students for emerging technologies, industry credentials, and certifications. Though I am grateful to receive this recognition and hope to reinforce the importance of career education, it is evident that investing in automotive program means investing in the future of our students. The time is now, more than ever, to coach, mentor, and our future, mentor our future generations. Know that Darkars stands ready to continue supporting these programs and providing opportunities to our amazing students. Thank you.
They're all so wonderful. Okay, so we have one more awardee in this category, and we're going to play the nominator video for Melissa Regan.
Ladies and gentlemen, tonight, we shine a spotlight on a tireless advocate whose passion and perseverance have transformed the community of Germantown, Maryland and beyond. Please welcome the exceptional Melissa Regan, the deserving recipient of the Distinguished Service to Public Education 2024 Award. For over 20 years, Melissa has dedicated herself to advocating for safer schools, equitable opportunities, and a stronger community spirit. From enhancing school safety measures to promoting inclusive environments across all of Montgomery County, her efforts in the PTA, LGBTQ advocacy, and community safety have left an indelible mark. Join me in a resounding applause for a true champion of change, the inspiring, the dedicated, the extraordinary, Melissa Regan.
Melissa is clearly no stranger to this room. She stands here at least three times, two times a year, giving testimony to the Board, so we appreciate you. Come on up. Congratulations.
Good evening, Board of Education, interim Superintendent Felder and MCPS staff. I am Melissa Regan, thankful for the opportunity to testify this evening. Okay, all right, that's just what I do. I have a lot of questions about like the AI video that I got from the Clemente team. All joking aside, public testimony introduced me to advocacy on a county-wide level and led to partnerships working with board members and MCPS staff. In particular, board members Smandrowski, Harris, Evans, and Rivera Oven have worked with me on countless occasions. Staff in the Departments of Fine Arts, Athletics, Compliance, Equity, and Office of the Superintendent opted in. opted in to work with me, in some cases for years, and I'm sure, glad, I hope that they are glad that they did. Shout out to the many people whose shoulders I stand on and to those that I'm passing the baton to, people like Cynthia, Audra, Laura, Rodney, Debbie, Bridgette, Yegus, Amy. Some people count steps in a day. I count texts in a day with these folks. A special acknowledgement to the Seneca Valley Cluster principals and parent leaders. It has been an honor to walk beside you and to see how far we've come. To Chris, who got the job of editing for tone in a gazillion emails that I have sent. To Calvin, who got his perseverance gene from me. To Spencer, who was inspired in fourth grade by Mr. Tehan and is finishing his first year as an MCPs teacher. And to Dory, who coined the phrase "Mom won't like that" and inspires me not to give up. And my parents are here, who always supported me being me. Thank you to the Board of Education for this honor, and thank you to Nicole Quiroga at Clemente for spearheading this nomination. Thank you.
We could not do this with our community individuals, and so thank you so much for giving of your time and talent to our students. We really do appreciate you. So at this time, I'm going to introduce, for the next category, my colleague Rebecca Smondrowski.
At the risk of being slightly repetitive, I just want to share that this is my favorite event of our year. Having been a volunteer with MCPs for about 10 years before I ran for the board, I know exactly how much time, energy, passion you all put into the advocacy and the partnerships that provide for us as an organization and as a school system. So, thank you. Thank you all very, very much. My category is Community Group, and it's my honor to introduce our next Community Group Award winners that has made a significant impact to education in MCPs. I was going to say, I think that's pretty much, you know, the nominator's going to speak for us.
My name is Delegate Chow. I'm representing Montgomery County and Howard County. I'm very excited to see Montgomery County Board of Education accepted my recommendation for Chinese-American Parent Association of Montgomery County called COPA-MC, the Distinguished Service Award. I'm really glad to see that COPA-MC being accepted for this critical recognition. COPA-MC has been a critical player with a strong partnership with MCPs since their establishment in 2016, as a new local nonprofit, over-volunteer organization, and is a thousand of members and families which represent a deep connection to the Montgomery County public school system. Before their establishment, there is a disconnect or gap between the public school system and the county's very diverse Asian-American Pacific Island community. And COPA really bridged this gap by introducing the school system to family and introducing the family to the school system. By doing so, COPA successfully bridged the gap, and this needed service and engagement really helped to increase the participation and the achievement for the families and students. I'm looking forward to deeper time and connection and partnership in the future between COPA-MC and Montgomery County Public School System. I believe by working together, this bridge and partnership will enhance the community and the school system and benefit all of us. Thank you very much.
So, at this time, I'd like to call up Xin Dong Chen for representation for the American Chinese-American Parent Association of Montgomery County.
Hi. I'm a not-good-public speaker, and I was thought write a speech with public chat GPT, but I think this is my teenage daughter doing that. But I think I just wanted to share some of our journey with you. COPA-MC was founded on 2016, and we had 40 founding members, and we are, most of us are first generation of the immigration, and we never, we are new to this land, and we are learning how to practice the democracy. And we try to build this COPA-MC open and transparent and organization to serve the community. So, we have the very clear bylaw, we create bylaws, and we have the election every two years, we have board. So, we try to do in the things like formally and make everything transparent, including finance and also the election, all the decision. We have multiple, like, the President Award and Dr. Chang Scholarship every year. And we also have the 10 Student Club, which covers the sports, like tennis and student young junior club, and also has the Kappa Phi One-to-One Tutoring. And also, we have the gardening club, there's multiple, covered multiple fields. We have contributed thousands of the student learning hours, and we also have more than 200 adult mentor and volunteers help this community. So, thanks the Board of Education gave us this opportunity and this award for us, which is, will encourage us to build a strong community in the future. Thank you.
This year, sorry, yeah, this year's the recipient. We're so grateful for the many contributions that your organization has made to us over the years. Right now, I'm going to go ahead and introduce my colleague Julie, and introduce the next category, which is Business.
Good evening. How are we doing tonight? Halfway there, so let's wake up. Let's go, because I'm so delighted to be here and to introduce our next category, our business partners. As a school system, this award is to truly appreciate those who are good partners that not only help our students, but also have last, make a lasting impact on our community. So, let me just paint a picture for you to introduce our first awardee. In the dim glow of screens, silent lines of cold dance with evil intent. In the heart of a cyberspace, unseen hands wield digital weapons, breaching firewalls like fortress gates. With a keystroke, chaos reign as system fodder and data trembles. In the echoing silence of the virtual realm, a cyber attack unfolds, leaving a trail of disruption and uncertainty in its wake. What did I just describe? Anyone knows? A scene of cyber attack. I think we are not strangers to cyber attack. Many of you in the room probably remember the 2021 pipeline attack, the pipeline attack, then Colonial, isn't it called Colonial Pipeline Attack, which caused about 50% of Virginia gas station and 15% Maryland and DC gas station run out of gas. All right. So, in our actively advancing world, the knowledge of cybersecurity is not just critical, it's a necessity. So with that, I would like us to roll the video to introduce our next awardee.
At any capacity, every corporation has the responsibility to contribute resources and opportunities to support what matters most, our children's future. Moreover, the head of each corporation has the utmost duty to advance its workforce's diversity, equity, and inclusion as an integral component of its mission and strategic planning. Cyos Corporation, a top provider of cyberspace operations services to federal customers led by President and CEO Mr. Caesar Pi, a veteran of the US Marines, has made championing our next generation of Maryland cyber defenders one of its highest priorities by supporting MCPs cybersecurity programs and partnering with the MCPs Educational Foundation. Cyos has made a long-term commitment to not only support MCPs cyber initiatives, but to also provide underrepresented high school seniors with the opportunity to pursue post-secondary education in the field of cybersecurity. It is with great pleasure and honor that I would like to thank the Montgomery County Board of Education for awarding Cyos the Distinguished Service Award for Education. To receive this award are Mr. Tyson Gee, Cyos Chief Compliance Officer, and Mr. Sang Duan Chan, Cyos Chief Technology Officer.
Thank you. Now, I would like to invite Tyler G, the CEO, and who else? Did you mention someone else on your team?
She's the vice and chief technology.
Okay, please come on up.
Well, between that introduction and the video, I don't have much to say. Unfortunately, Mr. Pi couldn't be with us tonight, but on behalf of Cyos, I want to thank MCPs, MPCS, yes, sorry, a little bit nervous up here, for this recognition and our continued partnership. Looking forward to bringing opportunities to students for, you know, looking towards a future in cybersecurity or just an interest in cybersecurity. Yeah, I don't have much else.
We'd also like to thank the Montgomery County Public Schools Educational Foundation. You know, thank you for our partnership. We want to make sure that, you know, we can do everything that we can to help out the community. We want to make sure that we are paving a way to allow, to create opportunities for underrepresented high school seniors. That is why the foundation, you know, that's why scholarship was created, so we can help get and strengthen our cybersecurity workforce, because we know we need it coming up with all the attacks that were mentioned, just like the pipelines and everything else that we probably can't talk about in this room. So, thank you so much. We really appreciate everything. Thank you for this recognition.
So, I actually was visiting one of the MCPs middle school, and the principal proudly showed me some equipments and the program that's supported by Cyos Corporation. I know that Cyos have received multiple prestigious award in the cybersecurity industry, right? But our award is unique, is it demonstrate your commitment to a future, to a future with empowered warriors that can protect our peace, and it signifies our appreciation for your generosity and partnership. Congratulations again. All right, so, there are two awardees in this category. So, last night, to prepare for tonight, I went on the website of our second awardee. And very soon, I fell into a very captivated rabbit hole for two hours. On that website, at the end of two hours, I ended up with a long list of restaurants I'm going to try, a trail, a hiking trail, a museum I didn't know about, and a whole bunch of other experiences that I want to do after living in this county for 20 years. And the places and the display made me, I think, successfully temporarily escape the FY25 budget to a place that is fun, delicious, lively, and enriching. So, and ladies and gentlemen, and that website belonged to our next awardee, Visit Montgomery. Please roll the tape.
Tonight, the Board of Education is recognizing an extraordinary business partner, Kelly Groff, President and CEO of Visit Montgomery. In 2017, under a direct charge of then-Supervisor Dr. Jack Smith, the foundation office was tasked with overhauling the MCPs hospitality and restaurant management programs. The purpose of the directive was to engage local hospitality businesses to help MCPs improve and update the curriculum to meet current industry standards and to strengthen the skill level of MCPs students entering into the hospitality industry. This request resulted in the formation of the Fourth MCPS Foundation, the Foundation for Hospitality and Restaurant Management, or FARM. Kelly Groff, along with Visit Montgomery, stepped up and took the lead to help recruit local businesses, some of them being large international organizations. Through her efforts, she has recruited businesses such as Marriott International, Choice Hotels, Medium Rare, Hilton, Kava, Schulman Rogers, and others to create the board. She partners not just as the vice president of the Farm Board, but also visits our classroom, provide mock interviews, organizes fundraisers, recruits industry partners, and hosts teacher summits. Kelly and Visit Montgomery requested and were awarded an Economic Development Grant, which will allocate funding to be used toward hosting the first Montgomery County Hospitality Showcase. This grant will create many opportunities for MCPs students to become engaged. In addition, there will be networking events where the students can connect with many industry professionals. Kelly Groff is a person of both words and action. Visit Montgomery is fortunate to have such a strong leader devoted to training and preparing the future of the hospitality industry. Kelly is one of the most genuine people you will ever meet. Congratulations for this well-deserved recognition.
I would like to invite Ms. Kelly Groff to receive this award.
Thank you so much. Dr. Felder, members of the Board of Education, thank you for recognizing Visit Montgomery and the work we do to support and promote education in hospitality and tourism industry. I also want to thank Steve Bowden and two of my staff members that are here from Visit Montgomery who provide so much support. We take for granted that tourism is really important to our economy and forget that we welcome nearly 8 million visitors a year who spend in our local economy $1.8 billion. And after recovering from COVID, it is really nice to see people coming back to our community, whether they're here for a meeting, a conference, youth and amateur sports, or just on business travel and leisure travel. So, we're very excited that we have such a strong impact on the local economy. As one of the fastest-growing and most profitable industries within the county, it's important to me that MCPs students have opportunities to explore the hospitality industry and potential career pathways. career pathways before they leave high school. There are a number of large employers that bring opportunities for students. Just within a 20-mile radius, there are three corporate world headquarters, Marriott, Hilton, and Choice Hotels. That says a lot about what's being generated in jobs in our local economy, but also in the Maryland, DC, and Virginia region that are opportunities for the students in the future. Through my role as President and CEO of Visit Montgomery, I began to connect with other industry leaders who identified the strong desire to provide support to MCPS students interested in hospitality and tourism. With the support of MCPS, I had the pleasure of being a founding board member of the Hospitality Foundation in 2018. The Foundation allows business partners to meaningfully engage with the students. The members of the Hospitality Foundation are not just Visit Montgomery, but Marriott representatives, Hilton representatives, Choice Hotels, and Kava, and many other dedicated organizations. Through our combined efforts, I'm proud to say, in the last three consecutive years, student enrollment in the hospitality program has increased for the last three consecutive years. We're very proud of that. One of the goals of the Hospitality Foundation is to help students envision their future and picture themselves in their career. While students learn proper techniques and industry trends in the classroom, we invite students to our business community and provide them with real-world opportunities. We accomplish this through engaging the students with events that we host. We hosted a dinner where the students cooked the entire meal and served, and served last year. And just last week, we held a golf event where we brought three high school stu-, three high schools into the cross vines where the students cooked the meals, worked the back of the house, worked with the chef, and we raised over $50,000 for one event. So, we last week were able to issue our first scholarships to five MCPS students, which is hopefully the beginning of many more scholarships. We're really proud of that. So, we look forward to additional opportunities to support, support the students. I serve on many boards and have in the past, and my staff serves on many boards, but we have to say this is our favorite because we really feel like we can make a difference and we love working with the students. So, thank you very much.
Thank you again, Visit Montgomery. Prior to joining the board, I was a college and career counselor. And I truly appreciate the different pathway that the school system has for our students and truly, truly value the partnership we have with the county organizations and businesses. And we want to open our doors to have you come in, take our interns, offer hands-on opportunities, let's partner to make a bright future for our students. Thank you. Next, I would like to invite my colleague Brenda Wolf to come and present the next category.
Well, good evening. I have the distinct honor of presenting the awards to our MCPS staff. You know, it's our staff that's the heart of our organization. They make this engine run. They help our students to learn, and we truly value and appreciate everything that they do. So, thank you. The first two awardees in the MCPS category are Mr. Ray Gray and Ms. Kathy Green. First, I'm going to start with Mr. Gray. Mr. Gray, let's, do we have the video? Can we put up the video for Mr. Gray?
Mr. Gray, the man, the mentor and the messenger. Mr. Gray, the man, represents a father figure to thousands of students he has supported over 25 years of service. Not only does he physically make one stand up in notice, but his presence of gentleness, kindness, and loyalty to the community who has entrusted their most valuable resource in his care, their children. Mr. Gray, the mentor, has reached and touched countless souls left behind. His mythology and manner are non-traditional to most, but effective and efficient. Witnessed a student athlete who refused to leave the field, but now is a US Marine. Mr. Gray, the messenger of hope and what can be. When life choices could have taken him low, he chose to stay on a higher path. Staying true to his beliefs and borrowing from years of wisdom, Mr. Gray demonstrates a gentle kindness of all to witness. This is Mr. Gray, the man, the mentor, the messenger, no doubt about it. Thank you, Terry Bradley.
At this time, I'd like Mr. Gray to come on up.
This is an injury I received, breaking a altercation. High school, wow. This is such an honor, really, and I can get emotional, so please excuse me, you know? Most of these kids come to us broken, you know? They, they are really broken. I had honored to visit a few homes and I found that the homes needed food. Most of these kids are broken because they are hungry. And my mission was to make sure they are fed when they come to school and love them unconditionally. And to help them be successful in life. I had about many students, I'm a veteran, I worked in the prison system, and I had a lot of kids join the military. So, this is truly a good honor. Thank you guys so much, the Board of Education. Ma'am, thank you so much, and I appreciate all of you.
Congratulations, Mr. Gray. Next, let's play the video for Ms. Kathy Green.
We are extremely proud that Kathy Green has been named a recipient of the Distinguished Service to Public Education Award by the Board of Education. Ms. Green continues to make an extraordinary impact across MCPS, the state of Maryland, and on the national level. As a teacher, coach, athletic director, and in her current role as Outreach and Development Coordinator, she has led with a student-centered approach. One of her greatest accomplishments has been creating and leading our Student-Athlete Leadership Council. The council has risen to state and national prominence, infusing student voice into our program and empowering leadership in our student athletes. Ms. Green continues to lead at the state level as the Director for the Girls' Cross Committee and on the national stage as a member of the NFHS Student Leadership Committee. Throughout her career, Ms. Green has fostered countless positive relationships with students and staff while promoting excellence in competition, achievement in the classroom, and citizenship in the school and community. On behalf of all of MCPS athletics, we congratulate Kathy on this incredible achievement. You raise.
Good evening, everybody. And I would like to start with thanking the Board of Education and Dr. Felder for this prestigious honor, but I also want to thank you for your unwavering support and commitment to MCPS Athletics Nation and making us the greatest inter-scholastic athletics program that exists across the nation. So, I really appreciate that support. The Student-Athlete Leadership Council began in 2019. I went to my director, Dr. Sullivan, and said, "We, we need to do something with student athletes," and he said, "Sky's the limit." And that was all that he needed to say. I want to thank the 25 high school principals and athletic directors every year that empower student athletes to engage in our Student-Athlete Leadership Council, also known as SOC. We also have various athletic directors across MCPS athletics that serve on the SOC Planning Committee. And then, we have the Department of Athletics, Ann Rossiter, Brian Walker, Sean Hendy, who do so much behind the scenes that people don't even realize what it takes to make SOC become a national council. And then, actually, this award should be shared because I have someone very special that co-sponsors the Student-Athlete Leadership Council with me, and that's Ms. Robin McHugh. So, if we could give her a round of applause. And then, lastly, I'm very fortunate. Every morning, when I drive to work, I look up and I say, "God, how could you bless me with a director that is so passionate about connecting with student athletes?" Because that's me, that's what I live for. I live for having conversations with student athletes. I live for infusing their voice into our program and making it better. And every day I come to work, I have a director, Dr. Jeff Sullivan, who wants to empower not only his colleagues and the people in his department as leaders, but student athletes. And student athletes just light up when he walks in the room. And it's just truly phenomenal just to see how our student athlete has grown from 2019 until now. And I also would be remiss to, to not thank two very special people that have worked to just capture our Student-Athlete Leadership Council and all of the work they've done, and that's Dr., and that's Mr. Terry McClung with MCPS TV, and then Dan Gross over there who was taking pictures. From 2019 on, has captured our work, so I want to thank them too.
So, congratulations, Ms. Green. At this time, I have to check on this because my fellow board member is not able to be with us and I have her part, so give me one second here. I'm pleased to introduce the remaining two awardees in our staff category. Could we please play the video for Mancha Lea Rodriguez?
I would like to take a moment to recognize Mrs. Mancha Lea Rodriguez as one of the recipients of the prestigious Distinguished Service to Public Education Award. Ms. Rodriguez is a leader and a visionary. She has served students with special needs for her entire career, originally working in the private school and then moving to MCPS to teach some of the most impacted students in the SDB and Extensions Programs. Mrs. Rodriguez not only supports students' educational needs, but provides her expertise in behavior modification, life skills training, and communication skills to provide her absolute best for every student and their family. You have touched so many students, and you will probably never know the true impact of your skills, but know that even many years after you've worked with students and their family, they still talk about you and smile when they see your picture in our photo books. Mrs. Rodriguez, it's been an honor to have worked with you and learned from you. I admire your strength and your passion and your love. I'm a better teacher because of you. You exhibit kindness and excellence, and because you are so willing to share your skills with others, there are many, many teachers out there who are better because of you. Thank you for sharing yourself with us.
At this time, I'd like to invite Ms. Rodriguez to come down.
I want to thank the Board of Education for this honor and my friend and colleague Liz, who nominated me. I'm here tonight with three of my colleagues and friends who have supported me, but even more who've supported our students and their families. As teachers in various, they call us the ALO, which, you know, MCPS loves a good acronym, which is the Alternative Learning Outcomes Program. So, we are, we serve the students with cognitive, intellectual, developmental disabilities, some of the most impacted students in MCPS. Students who a lot of times, the first thing people see when they see our students are the deficits, but it's our job to see the strengths that they bring to the table and much like the distinguished service of all those who've been recognized tonight, to teach our students that they also can, can self-advocate and also give and give back to the community. With my colleagues, we've done that in a lot of different ways. We've taught them to self-advocate for themselves, but even more to help them and their families think beyond what is possible. There are so many incredible organizations and people who've been, who've been recognized, but even there are so many organizations that after high school will help our students to gain employment or gain really meaningful, sorry, I went off script, meaningful volunteer work and to be visible and to be present in the community. And I'm gonna, just to remind everyone that everyone has something to give, and that's something that my colleague Liz really lives in, in everything that she does as well, to the extent, and I'll tell a story, I'll change names, but I had a student who has autism, he's got some OCD things, and a lot of times would just like pop up and just like bolt. And like, we kind of knew, like, oh, he's got to go turn off the light two doors down, like, he's got to go, you know, close a door or something like that. And I have another student who has some mobility issues, and the first student pops up and just like books it. And so, I knew, I knew exactly where he was going, so I knew we were like in a contained kind of space and he goes. And I'm, you know, about to either start walking or maybe sending a staff to, you know, just kind of encourage him to come back when he, when he finished the routine that he was working on. And another student of mine pops up and he goes, "It's okay, I got it." And I, and I think that that is really the epitome of what we try to teach. So, anyways, thank you so much for this recognition and for everything that everyone does for our students. Thank you.
I want you to know that it's okay to go off script. It just shows the passion that you have for your job and the potential that you see in our students, and you're excited to talk about it, and we're excited to hear about it. So, our last awardee in this category is Julie Sanders. Please play the video.
I'd like to thank the Board of Education for recognizing Julie Sanders for the Distinguished Montgomery County Staff Member Award. Julie has served within Montgomery County for decades. She has touched hundreds of students' lives and is such a huge asset for student rapport. She makes students feel safe, she makes students feel valued, and she creates these relationships that make students want to come to school every day. During her time, Julie has founded the Model UN Program at Gaithersburg Middle School, which she has coveted and shared with so many students. She has taken students abroad into several countries in Europe to use these skills. She has also allowed students to feel empowered by creating many different clubs, such as the Pride Club over at Gaithersburg Middle School, and she has been an invaluable asset to many members of the community. Thank you, Julie.
At this time, I'm going to ask Ms. Sanders to come on down. At this time, I'm going to ask Ms. Sanders to come on down.
I'm not going off script. I've actually given this speech to all of my students today to practice, but there's something very special that I wanted them to hear. So I thank you to the Board of Education for honoring me with the Distinguished Service to Public Education Award. I'm honored to be noticed and recognized after 20 years with MCPS. Thank you to my friend Erin Butler for nominating me. Actually, when I got the email, I thought she was getting the award. She is going to be America's favorite teacher, so vote for her. And I also want to thank my principal, Ann Dolan, who introduced me to Model United Nations when I was still an English teacher. You both have encouraged me to be a compassionate, engaging teacher. And I thank God for convincing me at 40 to change my career pathway and pursue a master's degree in secondary education. And thank you to my daughters Kristin and Katie for suffering as children when I ignored you and pursued my childhood dream of becoming a teacher. I hope you learned it's never too late to chase a dream or goal, no matter how crazy or disruptive it is. And thank you to my boyfriend Jamie for your support as I embark on the retirement phase. I'm retiring this year, 25 days. You've given me a reason to smile again. But most importantly, I thank each of my 2,000-plus students who have learned, laughed, cried, and shared their lives with me for 50 minutes a day for 10 months. The moment in time watching them grow, fall, learn, change, and begin preparing for the adult they'll inevitably become was a privilege, and I love being their teacher. The world is a better place because of each one of them. And before I conclude, I ask a favor. Two of my grandchildren start kindergarten in MCPS a year from September. They're twins. They're awesome. Please continue being caring adults who set policies that guide and give students solid boundaries and consequences. Without these guidelines, children cannot see where the lines are, so they cannot push the boundaries, learn from their mistakes, and try again. Before setting new policies, please come visit our classrooms to see how county policies are enacted and include the struggling teachers and the struggling students, because they're our reality. My grandchildren's generation is counting on each of you to guide them to adulthood. Their future lives are in your hands. Thank you so much.
Well, thank you, Julie, and congratulations on your pending retirement. Of course, we don't allow that, so you just take a break, and you can come back on our substitute role. Okay. Now, it is my privilege to introduce the awardees for school service volunteer, whose selfless dedication makes significant contributions to the school communities. Please play the introduction video for Oasis Tutoring.
Good afternoon. My name is Tara Strain. I am the very proud principal of Glen Haven Elementary School. We serve about 575 students in Silver Spring, Maryland, and I am here today to applaud and nominate and recognize Oasis Tutoring for all the hard work that they do within our school building. They currently work with our first-grade students, helping them with concepts that their teachers highlight that they need. The tutors are wonderful. They show up every week with a smile on their face. Our students are so excited to have them in our building and work with them. We've seen wonderful progress that these students have made by working with these tutors. They build these long-lasting relationships with the students and with their families. They are, do a lot of hard work on building on those concepts that their teachers have been doing, but really, it comes down to that relationship. The kids are so excited to meet with their tutor and to work with them and to show them the great things they're doing in the classroom that align with the work they're doing in their small groups. I just really appreciate the hard work that Kathleen and her team do to make sure that our students are successful and can build these relationships outside of the classroom that are leading towards their growth and achievement. Thank you.
At this time, I'm going to ask Kathleen McDaniel to come up and accept the award for Oasis.
Good evening, and thank you to the board, and thank you to Dr. Felder for this recognition. This is on behalf of our Oasis intergenerational tutors. We're honored to be recognized for our contributions to MCPS for over 25 years now. Our amazing volunteers, they choose to dedicate their time, and they go above and beyond every day to support their communities. So I'd like to take this time to recognize some of our actual volunteers that have their feet on the ground. And they're over at the table there, and I'm going to call them out. And when I call your name, if you stand up, I'd like for everyone to applaud them, please. Bill Rippey, go ahead and stand up, Bill. He's, for over 10 years, he's been creating engaging lessons for students at Clopper Mill Elementary School. Thank you, Bill. Andre Yenes, go ahead and stand up, Andre. Again, we have 10 years. Andre's a multilingual volunteer, and she uses her language skills to support the immersion program right now at Maryvale Elementary School. Thank you. And then we have Linda and Neil Schiffman. Go ahead and stand up. They're married. They both volunteer at Bell Elementary School as well as at Oasis. Linda helps teach our classes at Oasis, and they have a combined 17 years of support to the Oasis Tutoring Program. And then we have Glenda Henderson. Go ahead and stand up, Glenda. Glenda is our administrative volunteer. She helps with countless hours with our tutor library that we have on site, and she takes up any task that we need help with around the office. Okay, so my time is limited, but I wanted to share quickly some feedback that we received. At the end of the year, we always put out a survey to teachers and ask for feedback, and this is what one of the teachers wrote last year on our survey. I did change names also with students, so. My student Zoe came to me at the beginning of the year and expressed an extreme dislike in reading. Zoe had no interest in books, and it was a struggle to find a genre she was interested in. When I learned about Oasis Tutoring, Zoe instantly came to my mind as a perfect candidate. As the sessions continued, I noticed Zoe's confidence improve in the classroom. Zoe expressed a feeling of safety with her tutor, Ms. Janet, where she felt comfortable sharing her struggles with reading, which in turn created a safe space for her to learn, to find the types of stories she was interested in. Each week, Zoe became more confident in her abilities. In class, her reading ability improved tremendously. Zoe went from a below-grade-level reader at the beginning of the year to now reading above third-grade level. Oasis is incredible, and I thank Ms. Janet and the program so much. I'm so grateful that this program exists. And this is from an actual teacher in MCPS. Now, this story, it's just one example of the dedication and the hard work that our volunteers put in week after week. And I'll be honest, not every story, there's not always a student who jumps leaps and bounds in one school year, but every story has a student who's believed in and is given the time to feel successful because of our volunteers. Thank you, Oasis Volunteers. And thank you to all the other, all the other award recipients tonight as well. Thank you for your service. You're appreciated.
Okay, congratulations to Oasis. Next, please play the nominator video for the Special Education Equal Development Society, also known as SEEDS.
Hello, I am Evan Anderson, and I am thrilled to announce one of the recipients of the Award for Distinguished Service to Public Education, School Service Volunteer in Montgomery County. This award recognizes an organization that has truly gone above and beyond to improve our community's education system. I want to thank the Board of Education for this recognition. SEEDS, or the Special Education Equal Development Society, is incredibly deserving of this recognition. Established in 2021 as a student-led initiative under the Chinese-American Parent Association, SEEDS has quickly become a symbol of inclusivity and support within our Montgomery County public school system. Over the past three years, SEEDS has made numerous meaningful contributions. From hosting weekly classes filled with engaging activities to organizing special holiday events and monthly day camps, SEEDS has consistently provided valuable opportunities for special education students to flourish. Yet, it's not just about the activities themselves. SEEDS has made a lasting impact. Through tailored educational and social programs, they have empowered students, enriched our school system, and strengthened our entire community. Their collaboration with Montgomery County Public Schools has helped foster a culture of inclusivity and fairness, and their outreach to neighboring counties has created a sense of belonging and support for special education families throughout the region. Today, let's applaud SEEDS for their unwavering commitment, their passion, and the significant difference they've made in our community and in the education system as a whole. Please join me in congratulating SEEDS on this well-deserved honor.
At this time, I'm going to call up Sophia. Is it Wang? Wang? If my mispronouncing, correct me. That's okay, you can correct.
Hello, everyone. I know I'm last, but hopefully not least. So hello, everyone. My name is Sophie Huang, and I am a high school sophomore from Richard Montgomery High School, and I am also the president and founder of the Special Education Equal Development Society, or SEEDS. I'm extremely honored to be here tonight, and on behalf of SEEDS, we are extremely grateful for this award. I'm also extremely grateful for my counselor for recording that wonderful video. That was such great speaking. I would also like to extend our gratitude towards the selection committee for stepping up and joining the support system in this community and the school system that special education students desperately need. During the past two and a half years, SEEDS has grown rapidly, together with our volunteers, SEEDS students, and SEEDS families. What started as a few friends and a goal slowly but surely turned into a whole family. What really makes SEEDS so meaningful and fulfilling for us is how we support each other in a loving environment in each class and each event. Through this journey, I am incredibly thankful for my sister, who inspired this whole organization in the first place. Seeing her struggles pushed me to turn our worries into action. I'm thankful to our student volunteers, our student leadership, two of whom are with me tonight, and of course, our SEEDS families and students for believing in us and our mission. I'm so grateful for our two parent mentors, who are also here today, to our community partners, and everyone that has contributed. As a student-led organization, we are extremely happy to see such a substantial impact in our community, serving over 200 students each week in Montgomery County, Howard County, and Baltimore County. But our work is far from done, and through this award, we will draw motivation to work even harder to help others and to serve this community. Thank you so much for this recognition and your trust. With your support, we look forward to our future endeavors, and we'll work hard to help each student grow from a tiny seed into a beautiful flower. Thank you so much.
Are we so proud of our students? I'm going to say what I always say. We are in good hands. Our future is in good hands. So congratulations to SEEDS, and congratulations to all the awardees this evening. At this time, I'm going to turn the mic back over to Ms. Harris.
Thank you again, everyone, for coming out tonight and celebrating our amazing award winners, who really bring truth to the word that takes a village. We've seen tonight how our students, our parents, our community volunteers, our teachers and staff members all work together to create a whole host of opportunities for our students to make their experience in MCPS as good as it can be. One quick housekeeping announcement. After we're finished here in just a second, the lovely Dan Gross would like all of our award winners to come up to the front so we can get a group photo to commemorate this evening even further. So, here? He will tell you where to go. So just thank you again. This is always just such a great evening for the Board of Education to really celebrate just a few of the amazing people that help our, make our community a strong one. And it always strikes me that we live in a very rich and diverse community where so many people are doing so many great things, but so many times, we don't know about what everybody else is doing, because it is such a big and diverse county. And this is a great opportunity just to get a little lens into some of the other great things that are happening, that I'm betting many of you learned a lot tonight about some of the great work that's out there, and now maybe are going to make some connections because of some of the people you heard about and learned about and got to see tonight. It is no secret that this is a challenging time, not only for Montgomery County Public Schools, but for public education across the country. And those circumstances just make it even more important that we all recommit to the work of education, of community, of supporting the next generation of leaders. I can't echo Brenda more strongly. Every time I see the work of our amazing students in this county, I think we're in good hands, because they really are doing amazing work on a whole array of issues in front of them. They see a problem, they run to it, not away from it, and I so appreciate that about them. So tonight, we honored members of our community for their exemplary work on behalf of our students, our 27th Distinguished Service for Education Awards. I hope this puts a seed in all of your minds, because next year, we will be doing our 28th awards. And as you can see, the power of one person, seeing value in the work another is doing and making that nomination. So think about it. We got a year. Anyway, congratulations again to all our amazing award recipients and the families and friends who support them in their work. And good night. Enjoy the rest of your evening, and please follow Mr. Gross's directions for your photo up.